Hereby I call the I'm House Candy Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. We welcome everyone that's in attendance. We're glad to see we've got almost a full house, and that is good, always good. So, right now, we're going to continue into our business by having our pledge of allegiance and their invocation by Reverend Jones.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. To all wise God, you're great and greatly to be praised. How excellent is your name and all the earth. God, we come to acknowledge you in all of our ways, and we know if we do so, you will direct our path. God, we pray that you might save our country. We ask you that you might save this community. God, we pray that you might bless this board, God, to carry out the business of the citizens and honor you in doing so, for we ask these in all blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Next is the setting of our agenda. Does anyone have any items to be added? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as stated.
The second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is citizen comment period. This time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen, you have been permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And how many did you say it was? Ten?
Eleven.
Eleven. We have eleven people that have signed up and take heed to the three minutes. Okay? And first is Mr. Tom Adams. And when you come to speak to the board, come over to the desk into the mic and state your name and address, for the record.
For the record, my name is Tom Adams, 448 Adams Mill Lane in Appomattox. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Appomattox County Militia and its members. The militia is an organization that is not racist, homophobic, or any other negative descriptive name that folks throw around at those who don't agree with them. We are all inclusive. As defenders of the Constitution, we will protect free speech for everyone. But when the rights of one group tries to infringe on the rights of others, especially those of parents trying to raise their children as they see fit, then we must act. The Jamerson Public Library set up a display of books in the children's section that should be considered inappropriate for young children to be exposed to. This is unacceptable. One book in particular, if you're a drag queen and you know it, has a description that states the following: "A fun sing-along book with a drag twist that encourages kids to embrace all the playfulness of drag culture written by a member of Drag Queen Story Hour." It goes on to describe, "If you're a drag queen and you know it, let it show, singing along to the tune of 'If You're Happy and You Know It.'" This book tries to appeal to all young children, making it seem that this is all normal behavior, grooming them to enter their world. We, as a militia, do not and simply could not object to these free speech rights, but we cannot stand by idly as this is forced upon our children. This lifestyle is being promoted by adults who attempt to normalize abnormal behaviors and make it seem as if everybody does it, which is far from the truth. Even though protected by the Constitution, the rights of free speech should never trump the rights of parents to raise their children in safe communities, free from being subjected to perverted obscene content. When I tried to submit a letter to the Times-Virginian warning, county residents about to display their owners, Womack Publishing censored me and refused to print it. How is it immoral that books can be displayed, how is it that immoral books can be displayed but a letter warning parents can't get published? We feel that these alternative lifestyles are being crammed down our throats to force normalcy and inclusiveness in our society. We, the people of Appomattox County, ask the Board of Supervisors support promoting and protecting the rights of parents and children's morals by investigating acts such as these that infringe upon the rights of the majority to satisfy the minority. We have had enough of these ultra-liberal, unconstitutional, immoral, and blatantly obscene acts that groups feel they are entitled to use, and shaming and cancellation tactics to attempt to control us. Our schools, churches, libraries, theaters, media, and other places where children may be affected should be looked into. Most are respectful of parents' rights and would have no problem allowing a look as they have nothing to hide. Please join us in protecting our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to our next speaker, people with hats on, they've got to come off. Thank you. Jesse Merritt.
My name is Jesse Merritt. My address is 1890 Church Street in Appomattox. I'm here before you for the reason why many people are here as well, and that has to do with the contents of the public library, in particular, the LGBTQ display that we all have been privy to. You all have been receiving emails, calls from your constituents who are less than happy that this is right here in our little town. Some are going to say this is about free speech. Some are going to urge that this should have some corner room in the library, that maybe we should just make it age-appropriate, but it should not be in the library at all. We are taxpayers, and as taxpayers, our voices are the ones that actually matter in this regard. What our library is selecting, and the library is by its very nature a selective process, there is not every book in that library, so the very nature of what are we going to allow in the library is something we're already doing. So, on what basis are we selecting LGBTQ stuff geared and arranged for young children to read and enjoy so-called? Many are going to suggest that what I am advocating is a form of book burning, but it's not. If you cannot perceive the kind of degeneracy that this kind of material has on young children, you're not fit to be on a board. I'm not referring to you guys occupying here, I'm referring to the library board. And it falls to you to hold that board accountable. So, that's why we're here at this meeting, because accountability needs to happen. We can't do it. We can't say, now, we can show up to that meeting, and, trust me, a lot of us are going to show up at that meeting, but we can't remove them, we can't censor them, we can't do any of those. That falls to you. It's your responsibility as our representatives. And a betrayal of trust in the magnitude that was displayed at that library needs to have accountability. And it is unseemly that degeneracy of that kind on a good and moral people, on our children, should be leveled in this community. So, I recommend, and I do commend, what John Hinkle did last year in drawing attention to this, and I would like it if all of you would just be more diligent in this. You have a year that's passed by, and nothing has happened, and we need better leaders, and I don't want any of you replaced, I just want you to be better. I want some of this stuff, and we all want some of this stuff, to be more proactively looked into, so that it doesn't come to all of us already seeing and observing, and our children already having eyes upon material that's obviously inappropriate for them, that is seeking to perverse, pervert our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Hall.
My name is Cindy Hall. I live at 5275 Double Bridges Road in Appomattox. This is on the same subject, but a little different. We were concerned as to our public schools and what our libraries look like. So, I did contact Dr. Bennett and asked her if she could look up these books and to find out if they are in our public schools. And it's difficult for me to read this, but here I go. There are eight books. Gender Queer, All Boys Aren't Blue, The Bluest Eye, Teacher-Raping Tennis Team Fantasy, if you're a drag queen and you know it, which was talked about earlier, In Our Mother's House, Rainbow Revolutionaries, The Boy With Pink Hair. These books are on the county library website, if you want to look. These are just a few of them. Anyway, Dr. Bennett was nice enough to get one of her tech people to go through the 40,000 books that they have in the four schools, and none of these books were on that list. So, I thought that you should know that our public schools are handling that situation well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Merrich.
Ben Merrich, 1505 Church Street, Appomattox. We're going to hear some opinions about this matter from a few people, and I think it's important that we hear the opinion of the most important person, of that person being the Lord Jesus Christ himself. So, this is what he says about children. I'm reading from the Book of Matthew in Chapter 18. "And Jesus called the child unto him and said, Set him in the midst of them, and said, Verily, I say unto you, Accept ye, be converted, and become as little children; ye shall not enter the kingdom of heaven. Whosoever therefore shall humble himself as this little child, the same as greatest is in the kingdom of heaven; and whoso shall receive one such little child, in my name receiveth me." See that he cares about children, but he does. He continues, he says this, "But whoso shall offend one of these little ones, which believe in me? It were better for him that a millstone were hanged about his neck, and that he were drowned in the depths of the sea." That's not my opinion on how we should approach offending children. That is the opinion of your king and my king. Now, whether you choose to believe these words, that's between you and God. Nevertheless, it's true, and nevertheless, thousands of your constituents believe this. And so, it's incumbent on you to take this matter seriously. Does it sound like Jesus Christ, the Lord of the universe, is serious about the children? It does to me. And this kind of thing, the shoving this in our face, the constant gay pride, trans, drag queens prevalent in our culture, we don't want to see it in our town, we don't want to see it in our county, we don't want to see it in our Commonwealth, we don't want to see it here. We're not about that, and we're not going to tolerate it. We're not going to tolerate it. And so, in the same way that you see a child drowning, it's incumbent on you to do something to save that drowning child. Well, I didn't push the child in there, I didn't set up those books in the library, but you can do something to stop it. You can do something to stop it. And so, it's incumbent on each and every one of you to do everything in your power to stop it, to stop that offense. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Lanet Sales.
Lanet Sales, 1689 Salem Road, Spout Spring. This month at the White House, we got a true sense of what Pride Month is all about. The rainbow flag was hung in precedence of the Stars and Stripes. The president, who just last week spoke to military veterans, said of the group in front of him, "The people here are the most bravest and most inspiring I have ever known." And the White House yard was full of people in leather bondage outfits, animal suits, various states of nudity, and performing acts in public that could not even be shown on television. Pride Month. We've come to expect that behavior from Washington, D.C. in the past few years, but now, we've managed to bring that level of national dishonor, perversion, and depravity into Appomattox County. Was it done through the public schools? No. Was a business license issued for a sleazy nightclub in the backwoods of the county somewhere? No. Came here through the taxpayer-funded Appomattox County Library. Brightly colored children's books at a toddler's eye level, telling children how cute and wonderful it is to giggle and joke and sit on the lap of a mentally ill man dressed in makeup and sparkly gowns and pretending to be a woman. And wouldn't you like to be like that, too? If you're a girl, wouldn't it be fun to be a boy? And if you're a boy, wouldn't it be fun to be a girl? Well, here's a book on how you can do that, and your parents don't have to know, it'll just be our secret. Does anyone ever ask why drag queens demand an audience of children? I don't ever hear about them going into retirement communities or to spread their message and distribute their books. They always want audiences of children for their acts and for their books. I believe that people know why that is, and the answer is ugly. Did we vote for this? Was there a referendum question on the ballot that I missed on the order of, "Shall Appomattox County use taxpayer funds to hyper-sexualize and confuse little children in order to make them believe something that they are not?" I don't think so. People would have voted against such a referendum a thousand to one. Now, I know the law, and I know that the Board of Supervisors does not have authority over the day-to-day operations of the library, but the board appoints the people who do have that authority, and I'm here to ask that these appointments be made such that we are not surprised again next year, and that books that can confuse, damage, and degrade our smallest, most innocent citizens are not put up in a, quote, "pride" display, unquote, in the public library. Please make sure that I can again bring my grandchildren into the library and let them look at and enjoy and check out the books and learn to love reading and learning without my having to hover over them, making sure they are not looking at children's books, extolling the virtues of deviant sex and perversion. It's up to all of us to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Wolfskill.
Ken Wolfskill, Fourhouse Creek Road, Appomattox. When I was a small boy, my father and stepmother locked me in a room with one window painted black. They would come in drunken stupor and beat and molest me, sometimes every day. This went on for over three years. I remember laying on the floor, trying to hold my breath long enough to die. Over the years, I have worked with at-risk youths, counseling and working with young ones, I heard many stories. One all-too-common thread was so many of these young ones had experiences like or worse than my own as children, all struggled to make sense of life. Too many resorted to self-mutilization, drugs, and even prostitution. How does this connect to our public library? I'll share one book, the book everybody's talking about tonight. If You're a Drag Queen and You Know It. Look at these illustrations geared to catch the children's eye. This page that I have open says, "If you're a drag queen and you know it, shake your bum." Look at the positions. Hopefully, it disgusts you. This is not cute, this is not funny, this is not entertaining, this is desensitizing. This and many other books in our public library geared to children and young adults normalize child abuse because of the fad of the day. Our children are not fads, they are made in God's image, they are God's children. He charges us with their well-being. As an author of children's books, who has his books in this same library, I'm saddened by the approach our current library board has taken in their decision-making process. As a victim of childhood molestation, I'm terrified for our county's children. This is not okay, not if you truly love God's children. Normalization of perverted touch and actions disarms our children, sets them up for a long-lasting harm, and cannot, should not, be tolerated. As this is the county Board of Supervisors, you are charged with the safety and well-being of other citizens. This includes the children. These books in our public library fail that requirement. So, what can the Board of Supervisors do? You should immediately close the library. You should remove the current library board. You should immediately appoint a citizen team to go inspect the books in our public library and remove all inappropriate books. Did you know in the young adult suction there are positively pornographic books? You have a duty as our elected magistrates to safeguard the children. This is not book banning, this is book selection. No public library has room for every book. Our public library, just like every other library, makes selections every day as to the books they will stock on their shelves. Supervisor Hinkle brought this to your attention a year ago. I went to the library a year ago and discussed this with him. The time has come for action. Thank you.
Bradley Driscoll. Oh, excuse me, Bradley. Please remove the hat. Thank you.
I'm Bradley Driscoll, 4405 Salem Road, Spout Spring. Everybody that spoke before me tonight spoke wise, and they spoke better than anything I could ever say to y'all, and I'm 100% in agreeance with everybody in this room. I come to y'all tonight as a follower of Jesus Christ, and I come to y'all as a concerned parent. What our library did recently at the start of Pride Month is damning, it's unacceptable, and it's perversion, it's a form of grooming that they performed on our children in a passive way. Why are we allowing our little children to be brainwashed by such sexual immorality? As a Christian, I love people enough to speak the truth, and I love them enough to tell them what is right and what is wrong. God states that the LGBTQ material is wrong and it's immoral. It's so wrong that he destroyed Saddam and Gamar over it. Should that not concern any Christian here today? I'm sure if you're a Christian, you will agree with me that there's got to be a stop put to this. I don't want my taxpayers' dollars to be going towards this garbage. If you're a Christian, you will agree that there's no such thing as a gay Christian, put it that way. And I'm just going to say this. Little children need to be learning about their ABCs and their 1-2-3s, not about the birds and the bees and the LGBTs. Little children should be dreaming about what are they going to be when they grow up? A firefighter, the next president of the United States, an astronaut, the next football player? They shouldn't be dreaming about being a drag queen. They shouldn't be thinking about being somebody or something they will never be, especially going as far as permanently mutilating their body, destroying that which God formed in the mother's womb fearfully and wonderfully made. God did not make any mistakes when he made you male or when he made you female. There are only two genders, that's what children should be taught. Again, I don't want my taxpayers' dollars going to this garbage, and I don't want to take my kid to a library where he's going to say "Dada" and point at a book that's teaching you how to be a drag queen and throw your life away to the dogs. It's just wrong. I know I'm not the best speaker here tonight, but I come here tonight again as a follower of Jesus Christ and as a concerned parent. There's got to be a stop to this. The library board should be ashamed of themselves, and I'm calling on everybody that voted for such to be removed. Like everybody else, I will not be silent. I will continue to speak the truth till the Lord calls me home, and if it's a crime, then so be it. Thank you, and God bless y'all.
Martin White.
My name is Martin White. I live at 2826 Horseshoe Road in Appomattox. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and ladies, thank you for your service. The material I found at the Appomattox Library was wicked material. It was obscene in picture and in word, and it was not only in the kids' section, as Dutch mentioned, but it was also in other age groups' sections. It was literally pornographic, and there were books devoted to... It was a fantasy about child molestation by a teacher and a tennis coach, and it was disgusting. This material is unacceptable in our community. Its purpose, being in the library, is to deliberately hurt this community's children. And I certainly, and I believe most of us here and most of us in this community, demand that you guys hold those who are responsible for this accountable. That goes for the librarians and the library board members who are accountable, and when they are identified, which I hope you guys do identify them, you need to remove them, and your failure to do so will be consent of their actions. Thank you.
Jerry Bois.
Jerry Bois, 630 Blackberry Lane, Appomattox. I have many fond childhood memories of visiting the local library in Appomattox. From its days beside what is now the middle school to where it is now, my brother and I have checked out literally hundreds of books. Workers from the early to late 90s would remember us as we rode our bikes or walked there, leaving with the Hardy Boys, some Louis L'Amour or Boys Life magazines. Our neighboring library in Lynchburg could say the same thing. So, I was disappointed but not surprised when our local library decided it would refuse to remain neutral in what is a very divisive and controversial issue. Since those in charge of the library are unafraid to promote a topic of sexual nature, I wonder when they will promote a display on straight pride or perhaps abstinence. But who am I kidding? It is well-known that tolerance is a one-way street when dealing with radicals. Tolerance has become a catchphrase to really mean acceptance and agreement. So, the target becomes those among us most vulnerable and least likely to be aware of the harmful lifestyle that our library staff and leadership promotes. Children are encouraged to explore dangerous practices and to discover ways of harming their mental and possibly physical health. How, one may ask? Those in the LGBTQ plus community are more likely to... Those in the LGBTQ plus community are more likely to suffer in greater disproportion to the general population from STDs, eating disorders, mood disorders, violence towards each other, substance abuse, and suicide. Sadly, over 40% of transgender people attempt suicide as compared to the 1.6% of the general population. We really need to ask ourselves, is this something that children need exposure to? Is this something to be celebrated and promoted with the youngest among us? This is not California. This is not Northern Virginia. This is Appomattox. Our community needs leadership to recognize what is best for the people. Our library needs leadership that knows what is healthy for a child's development and education. If we are truly concerned about equality and justice, then we would not promote a radical agenda that disproportionately harms children. That is not love. That is not loving our neighbor as ourself. Love does not affirm a lie. Love protects the innocent. Love does not groom our children to explore or adopt deviant sexual lifestyles and practices. Love is speaking truth into the lives of all people, but especially into the lives of those most easily molded and vulnerable. If the county leadership and the library leadership doesn't recognize what the community at large recognizes, then the leadership needs to change.
Karen Agulow.
Good evening. I'm Karen Agulow. I'm in Concord. The library board has willfully chosen to violate our state's obscenity laws and our community's basic decency standards by purposefully making available and even promoting the books to our minor children that contain pornography and degeneracy. A large number of these books are on full display, including in the very young children's section. Now honestly, the Virginia Code does allow libraries to have these books under 18.2-383, but it does not allow the display of child pornography or grooming videos or materials for minors, and that's 18.2-37.4. So unfortunately, the Board of Supervisors is in a situation where you have a library board that is breaking the law. You do control the library, and you're legally and morally obligated to correct the situation. So I really ask you to take swift action, and I would recommend the following solution. Close the library building tomorrow. Just close it. Continue to allow the conference room to be used of people who have reservations. Also, on the library's website, immediately disable the section called LGBTQ Plus Pride Month until the contents can be evaluated. I would then recommend that you quickly appoint a team of citizens that represent all of your districts, and I bet you there's a bunch of people right here who probably volunteer, to go in and spend just a couple of days while working in the library to do the following tasks. Quickly go through the library and gather up all the obscene pornograph, obscene and pornographic books and videos that are within the reach of minors. Put all of those in a separate place in the library that from now on can only be accessible to adults. They can be reviewed later to see if they actually are appropriate to have in the library, but for now, get them out of the reach of children. They also should review what's on the library's website. Then that library can open when you're done. I don't think this is going to take that long. I also would immediately remove the current library board members and appoint new people from your districts and evaluate the performance of the librarian and the staff and replace them if necessary. This is a legal issue. This is, and you guys are legally responsible. But the goal is to reopen the library as quickly as possible, you know, after the objectional books and videos have been removed from the children's section and secure it in an adult-only section. Please note, I'm not asking for books to be banned, just so we follow the law and remove them from the reach of children. Thanks for listening to my recommendations, and I'm willing to help out right now. Thank you.
Okay. Next is library material content. Reverend Raymond.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Or is he number 11 speaker?
No.
Can I make a statement before we go to the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, fellow supervisors. Jack Evans, former mayor of Dallas, Texas, coined a phrase, "You have what you tolerate." We as citizens and Christians have tolerated things for so long that these words have proven all too true. We are simply experiencing the consequences of what we have tolerated yesterday. Appomattox citizens are loudly saying this is a new day with emails, letters, phone calls, and their testimony here tonight clearly send a message that will no longer tolerate the indoctrination and glamorization of the LGBTQ lifestyle to their underage children. The laws of this county say children are not mature enough to make serious decisions that could have long-lasting consequences, like getting a tattoo, driving a vehicle full of their peers, drinking alcohol, smoking cigarettes or marijuana, taking drugs, getting married, owning firearms, or even voting. Yet the people in charge of our J. Robert Jamerson Memorial Library for the second year in a row find it acceptable to promote LGBTQ indoctrinating information to induce our children to make clearly serious decisions on an issue that will have lifelong consequences on both their physical and mental health. We opened this meeting with a prayer to our sovereign God for guidance in making decisions on the governance of Appomattox County. Did we do this because of some lasting, long-lasting tradition or because we truly believe that God is perfect in his wisdom, and we want to follow his guidance? God and his word clearly states that the LGBTQ message is not of God, but solely the foolish wisdom of man, nor does God condone such behavior. King Biden has erected an LGBT idol on the White House lawn for all to give allegiance and to bow down to. Is this Board of Supervisors going to bow down and fear a man? Or will we stand with God as Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego did during the reign of King Nebuchadnezzar? I stand with God and make a motion to remove all remaining library board trustees, Ms. Susan Williams, Ms. Evelyn Ford, and Ms. JoTricia Humbles immediately from their positions as trustee on the library board.
Motion's on the floor. That's it. That's it. Motion's on the floor as I second. Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, excuse me.
I don't disagree with anything anybody said tonight. But some of these library board members did not know that that display was going up until after it went up. And I do, I do have a little bit of an issue of just blanket, get rid of everybody until you know the facts. I know that my library board member that represents my district, she has, is in the process of implementing some steps to make sure something like this doesn't happen again. But I'm not, you know, I would like to give her the opportunity to fix what happened. I can't speak for the other two board members because I have not talked to them. But I think just blanket, get rid of everybody, but they're having all the information's a little premature. If they don't fix the problem, then we'll get rid of them.
Well, Mr. Hogan, let me say this, that I too agree with the speakers and the, I'm sure, the majority of the audience that is here tonight. But I in turn agree with you. Now, from my district is Evelyn Ford, a former teacher, and all, and everything that I have gone through with her on and subject of the library board. She's, she went down there immediately when I told her about this. And she talked to the wanted librarian. There was another person that worked in there. In a way, the material was taken down. So I would not and will not vote to destroy the existing board. So I just want to let you know that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr., excuse me, Reverend.
Everything that I've heard tonight is extremely disturbing to me. I am of utmost importance to the children of this community. And what I'm hearing is this was an issue last year? Is that, is, am I hearing correct? I was not on the board. What was done last year to address this issue? Or is this just a blatant return to what was done last year?
I don't think anything like this came up last year.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hinkle.
It did come up, and several people that spoke tonight alluded to it. And several members of our community went to the library board. And I wish they were here tonight to give testimony because the report they came back with was that the library, nobody on the library board stood up with their position that this material is wrong for children. And in addition, the library board, especially the chairman or whoever was in charge at that time, treated those grandparents and parents there with disdain and hostility.
Well, my representative, she didn't go on until about four months ago, three or four months ago. So I can contest that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, is there anything we can do short of voting to remove that board at this time? Do we need more facts? Do we have the authority to do that?
I agree with you. We need to dig into the dirt a little bit deeper and find out everything about it, the subject, as much as we can. As for immediate action, I think we, as a board, get the county administrator to write a letter to the board, library board, and stipulate in there some regulations that must be adhered to. If not, then we, as a BOS, will take the necessary action to make sure and ensure that this doesn't happen again. That's all I can say. Pardon me. This is not up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
To Mr. Jones's question about the legal authority, do we have the authority to get rid of them tonight?
I don't know, Mr. Latchenhead.
What state law says? I'm on the cell phone here. What state law says is they can be removed for misconduct or neglect of duty? So if, if a vote continues, there needs, I think Mr. Hinkle needs to clarify that he believes posting these books, having these books is misconduct or neglect of duty because that's a requirement. You have a couple of other options as well. It says it shall be at least five members. You could raise the number to seven or eight if you didn't think it rose to the level of misconduct and simply appoint additional new members. That is an alternative solution as well. So there are, there are other ways. Or you could vote on the individual. If you, if Mr. Chairman has a concern that his member is not part of this group, you could actually, and it may be better to vote individually on each one, whether there was misconduct, if that's the path that you're going to take. But if you're going to remove them, it needs to be based on misconduct. And again, I think, based on what the citizens are saying and my understanding of what's in there, I do think some of the material is pornographic and could be construed as misconduct to allow it to be accessible to children. So that, but I do think the motion needs to be clarified that that's the basis for the removal is for misconduct. But I do think you need to appoint, I mean technically, you would have no governing body then, so I do think you need to, if, if you vote to remove them, you need to put somebody else on because state law mandates that we have a library board. So we can't remove them, have no board. We would by law have to appoint other members as the new board.
Mr. Chairman. So what I hear him saying is, we have to say that they engaged in misconduct. Okay? Is it possible to, can we do anything as far as removing the material from the library? As, we can't do anything in there?
No, the, the state law's written that the library board controls the library. We have no ability to control what they do. I mean, basically, once the budget is approved, they can do whatever the heck they please.
Mr. Chairman, I would amend my motion to say the reason for cause is the endangerment of children and display of pornographic material. And I also like to note that we do have an agenda item for appointment of board members to the library board that's further down our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, the motion is made and been amended. Is that second?
I'm sorry. Could you, could you restate that, John?
I said amend the motion that the reason for the removal is child endangerment and display of pornographic material. Allowing the display of pornographic material and allowing the endangerment of children.
Is that second?
Unless you have a better way of putting it.
Well, I, I second the, the thought for sure, and I want the material removed. There's no question about that. And I think everybody here feels the same way. I do not know your representatives, and I want to be, you know, sensitive to the fact that, I mean, how does, I, I don't know the operations of this board. So how does the material get into the library in the first place? Is the librarian making these decisions? Is the librarian, or I'm sorry, is the library board approving lists of books for purchase? What is the, what is the actual application and how is it happening? Is it possible that this person, that representatives on the library board? I'm asking this because I don't know. That representatives on the library board were unaware that the display was being put up? That, that's what I hear being said. I will say that, if I may, because I am, instead of seconding something, I'm engaging in conversation here, but I will say that I, tonight I'm going to appoint a member to the board that has exactly the same views that I, that I do. And I've had a conversation with her just two hours ago to make sure that that was the case. And, Mr. Hinkle, I'm assuming that you're appointing someone that has the same views. I, I don't want the material in there. That's, that's what it comes down to. We need to figure out how to get it out of there. And I, if a person is on the library board that's okay with the material, then yes, they, 100%, they should be gone. If there's some way that a person on the library board was unaware...
Well, I do know that at least two of the members still on there were on the board that heard the complaints a year ago. So they can't say that they weren't aware. Now, Mr. Carter's represented since he's only been on four months. Okay, maybe, but the other two have been on there longer. So they were aware.
Mr. Chairman, so basically what we're saying is, if we vote to remove them, we're saying that after they were notified and after citizens asked them to remove this material, that they failed to do so. Is that, is that basically what we're, what we're saying? If we say that they endangered the children, we're saying that once they became aware of it, they still failed to act. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. No, Mrs. Ford went down to the library, and she went over to the children's section. Now, what she saw, she said she couldn't believe the material was at a child's eye level. Okay? So there's no way a child could miss it instead of being located elsewhere. So she in turn talked to the library staff who were present there. And they had what are called a call meeting, I think, or telephone. They didn't actually meet. And from there, the books were removed. That caused any kind of disarray for a child to see. That wouldn't have been appropriate. They didn't move them. They didn't move them out of the building. They moved them into a different section. Well, I kind of feel like that everybody else, I don't think should even be in the library. But I'm one person. And what Mr., what Mr. Hipps was talking about is the very reason why I think that we need to get down to ground zero and find out the workings of this library board. Because I, for another, I don't know who orders them books or what. And who, does the board have any power? The library board have any power? Or is it the librarian itself? Is that the responsibility of that person? So, in saying that, I think we need to get to the nitty gritty and find out and investigate this. Further discussion? Motion on the floors? No, it hasn't.
I will. I'll second Mr. Hinkle's motion with the understanding that those on the library board, knowing, if those people on the library board knowingly allowed these materials and displays, does that make sense? Is that clear?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair.
Contingent upon, yeah. No, go ahead. The idea is that contingent upon, another way of doing it is presenting it to these library board members in the sense that we believe that you, we want these materials removed. And if you're not okay with and agree with having these materials removed, then you're going to be dismissed from the board.
I do not know who was on that board last year. Do you know, Mr. Hinkle?
I appointed, I appointed a representative, but she had to move.
What's the term, four years?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Susan Williams then was appointed in 2021. Ms. Evelyn Ford was appointed in 2022. And Ms. Humbles was appointed in 2022.
So, none of those three?
So, all those three have been on the board during Pride Month of 2022.
Well, like I say, Evelyn Ford went down there about four months ago. I think I brought her name to you all then. She was filling out.
Filling an unexpired term then.
Yes, yes. So, did Ms. Williams, yeah. Since then, I don't know what she was chairman of what. Biff Gillum and your representative, Mr. Hipps.
Had to move out of the county.
They have resigned.
Yeah.
Anyway, motion is on the floor?
I'll second for the principle of the matter. I believe it's going to fail anyhow, and then I'll have a substitute.
Okay. Okay, we have a roll call vote in regards to this motion and the second. Mr. Hipps.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Not because I don't want the material gone, but because I don't think Ms. Williams is responsible. She tried to fix the problem. So, I'm not going to vote to get rid of her if she's trying to fix it. So, I vote no.
And I also vote no. So, three, two, that the board will be ceased. The current board will be ceased. And new appointees appointed. Okay. Okay, now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir.
If we could, you'll have to advise me on Robert's roles here. We already set the agenda. But if we could re-move number six to now? Which, number six is the appointment of library board trustees. If we could reorder that to now?
We can do that.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
Head nods, good.
Okay, I'm nodding. Mr. Chairman, I'm open to Mr. Latchen's suggestion that we appoint a number of individuals. But for the moment, right now, I'll appoint Hope Adams from my district.
Toby.
Hope.
Hope.
Hope Adams. And as I discussed earlier, she is a great candidate for this, is in full agreement with the thoughts that were expressed here tonight. I've confirmed that about two hours ago. And she's also an elementary school teacher. So, I think she'd be perfect for it.
Okay. While we're on appointments, Mr. Hinkle.
Mr. Chairman, Carter, I'd like to appoint Mr. Brandon Barney, who's here tonight. Board has any questions? He's a father of young children and a small business person here in the community, lifelong residence, graduate from Atmance County Schools for the vacancy in Falling River District.
Okay, and that's the only two we have. Yeah.
This time, if Mr. Hogan would want to reappoint his person, I think since he feels that she is doing a job, I'd say that was up to him.
I just want to make sure I understand where we're at. The motion has passed, so the entire board is gone.
Gone.
Correct?
Yeah.
I don't know that she will continue to, based on what happened in the vote to get rid of her, I'm not sure she's willing to continue serving. But I will ask her. And I will go ahead and make the motion to reappoint her. And if she feels like that this is not something that she can accomplish or is willing to accomplish, then she knows my sentiments on the matter. And she can either, she cannot accept a reappointment, and I've got another name if she doesn't. So, I will make a motion to reappoint Ms. Susan Williams.
Okay. Now, that leaves me. And I'm going to reappoint Evelyn Ford on the board. And I'm like you, if she'll accept it. And I hope she will. So, under the, under the...
There's still one more opening, Mr. Chairman.
Is it?
If Reverend Jones.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Not a problem. I did not come prepared tonight to see the board be terminated. So, I don't have a name.
Okay.
I don't have a name tonight.
We can, you can come back next month.
Might have one here.
Okay, we have four people that we need to vote on.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Are we voting on these individuals to continue to fill the terms that the people that are replacing?
That's how it would work. They would fill the unexpired terms. The terms are fixed. They're filled, they're just filling in the unexpired terms, yes.
Okay, so we're voting on Hope Adams, Brandon Barney, Susan Williams, and Evelyn Ford.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would be willing to consider someone that's here tonight from my district. So, please give me your name.
I'm Nancy, I'm Jo Billings. Nancy Jo Billings, I live on Wildway Road in Pine Mountain. They're happy to serve.
What's your last name?
Billings.
Billings, B-I-L-L-I-N-G-S. A civil mama worked in the ER at PCU many years, still a RN. Some of these issues that impact these children very dangerously can affect their whole well-being. I have seen children who have been raped. But what can I say more?
And that's good, thank you. We appreciate that. We've had discussion. Now, we're getting ready to vote.
At this time, I'd like to nominate Ms. Nancy Billings to represent my district.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, now, I will read once again the appointees as listed. Hope Adams, Brandon Barney, Susan Williams, Evelyn Ford, and Nancy Billings to the library board of trustees to fill it on expired terms.
Is that your motion, sir? Or what?
No.
He's just summarizing all of the individual motions.
It's our motion now.
Oh, okay.
To accept those names.
So moved.
Well, unless somebody objects, they basically had five nominating motions. You have a nominated slate now. So, unless somebody says, I want to vote individually, then you can vote for them all at the same time.
Does anybody feel like it? I didn't think so, me either. Okay, it's our motion to appoint these five.
That's already there, just need to roll call.
Okay. Mr. Hipps.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
And I'll also vote aye. Okay. Moving on, we have the library material content, Reverend Raymond.
Paul Michael Raymond, 285 Clock Road, Appomattox. I appreciate your hearing me out. I could not tell you what I wanted to say in three minutes, so I appreciate you putting me on the docket. Thank you so much. But before I do that, I want to thank every one of you for being here and doing what, you knew what was right. And thank you, gentlemen, ladies, for being witness to this. I do, I do want to start out by saying that it is, to appease your conscience, of course, it is the duty of the library board to investigate. That's what you put them in there for. So, to claim ignorance, and of course, there's really, you know, there's no such thing as ignorance when something is unlawful. So, what I want to do, if you, if you give me your attention, please, is to drill down just a little bit to show you how serious the severity of the situation is. It's not just simply the opinion of this body here or the constituency that you have. I want to show you by the law book, and I think Mrs. Angelo had mentioned some of these statutes. And then I want to show you some of the documentation that is in the public library. And then, I'm a man of action, and I appreciate all of the action items. And you know there were a lot of action items here. I'd like to review some of those action items that I believe that this board needs to undertake. This is not only for the public library. This is also in the high school library. I'm not so sure about. We had some investigation on some of the libraries, the elementary and the junior high school library. But I don't have a lot of information there. So, we'll have to reserve for a later date. What we have before us, gentlemen, is potential felony class V violations. All listed in the Code of Virginia, in the Code of Virginia, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, under the category, family offenses and crimes, particularly against children. So, we're not talking, and I must reiterate some of the comments here, we are not talking about book banning or First Amendment violations or anything like that. We are directing our comments, especially my comments, against obscenities which can be accessible to juveniles. Now, one point of fact here. Have you ever seen a seventeen-year-old, six foot one? They can reach the highest shelf, yet they're juveniles. So, to remove books and put them on a higher shelf is not solving the problem. Juveniles are juveniles under eighteen years of age. So, we want to make sure that we have our definitions proper. All right, so let me read some, if you will, some definitions. Juvenile means, and this is Article Six, prohibited sales, and I stress, loans to juveniles. Eighteen point two dash three nine zero. Juvenile means a person less than eighteen years of age. Nudity means a state of undress so as to expose the human male or female genitals, public area, or buttocks with less than a full opaque covering or showing of the female breasts with less than a fully opaque covering of any portion there or below the top of the nipple or the description of, or covered of so and so and so and so. So, what I have here, Exhibit A, some of these things I'll pass out to you. Exactly in the young adult section, I made copies of all of the books. Violation of that, that part of the law. Sexual conduct means actual or explicitly stimulated acts of masturbation or sexuality, sexual intercourse or physical contact in an act of apparent sexual stimulation or gratification with the person's clothed or unclothed. Sexual excitement is included. Then we have sadomasochistic abuse means actual or explicitly stimulated flatulations, masks or bizarre costumes, or the condition of being federated or bound. And I have those copies here. Harmful to juveniles means, and this is important...
Mr. Right, excuse me, Reverend.
Yes, sir.
Please address this to the board, not to the audience.
I'm sorry. Just want to make sure nobody's asleep. As a pastor, I know sometimes they fall asleep. Thank you, sir. All right, so harmful to juveniles means that quality of any description or representation in whatever form of nudity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement, or sadomasochistic abuse, when it predominantly appeals to the shameful or morbid interest of juveniles, and you know that's where they're going to go, is patently offensive to prevailing standards in the adult community of Appomattox, the Bible Belt, as a whole with respect to what is suitable material for juveniles, and when taken as a whole lacking in serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for juveniles. I would like to then look at the definition of obscenity. The definition of obscenity, which is eighteen point two dash three seven three. And we find it here on page six eighty-nine. Notice what it says here in definitions. Obscenity or unlawful acts. In eighteen point two, three ninety-one, notice what it says here. It is unlawful for any person to sell, rent, or loan to a juvenile, knowing or having reason to know that such a person is a juvenile. Now, I spoke with Ms. Adams. And unfortunately, a juvenile was taking out a book. And Ms. Adams happened to see that it was inappropriate. But the librarian didn't know that, and they were ready to hand out the book. Any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed matter, however reproduced, or explicit and detailed verbal description or narrative accounts of sexual incitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse, which is taken as a whole is harmful, is harmful, this is the law, is harmful to juveniles. So, what I have here, and I will show you this, is you have illustrations in the young adult section of the library of fornication with a man and a woman. And then, not only explicit fornication, but also... And I'm not, I don't even want to read this. This is too disgusting. But this is what our children are reading. This is what the children are reading. So, that there, you have this here. This is homosexual activity here. And that's a violation of eighteen point two dash three sixty-one. The effect of homosexuality on moral delinquency, Doe versus the Commonwealth, nineteen seventy-five. So, what we have... So what we have before us, and I won't bore you with reading more and more of these things, but what we have before us is a potential felony crime. Notice eighteen point two dash three eighty-four, proceedings against book alleged to be obscene. Whenever he has reasonable cause to believe that any person is engaged in the sale or commercial distribution of any obscene book, any citizen or the attorney for the Commonwealth of any county or city, or city attorney in which the sale or commercial distribution of such book occurs may institute a proceeding in the circuit court in said city or county for adjudication of the obscenity of the book. So the reality here is that we need to take all of the evidence and bring it to the Commonwealth Attorney of Appomattox. He has already requested this material here, which I will give him. And then we'll see. So your decision to ask the board to step down, to require the board to step down, is the right decision. You have not done anything wrong. In fact, you did everything right. Their duty was to protect the children. So here are my recommendations. I agree with a number of the individuals here. Close the library until all obscene books are removed. Not put on a high shelf, not have them anywhere polluting the library, because we are sliding into Gomorrah. But get rid of the books entirely. If they want these graphic novels, they can go to Barnes and Noble and purchase them themselves. But they don't have to have our taxpayer money fund them. Number two, as was already stated, select, establish a citizen board to oversee book purchases and inspect the library periodically for any and all infractions. Number three, remove all obscene books from high school libraries. Now, that's another issue here. Whether or not these are in the library in the high school now, we don't know. But at one time, they might have been, because we went online, we did some research. There's a book called A Stolen Life. This book contains aberrant sexual activities involving child molestation, rape, and references to bestiality, sexual nudity, violence, drug abuse, references to animal cruelty, and mild infrequent profanity. Another book called Damsel. This book contains explicit sexual activity, sexual battery, sexual nudity, and infrequent profanity. Empire of Storms. This book contains obscene sexual activities, explicit sexual nudity, violence, and profanity. The Duff. This book contains sexual nudity and explicit sexual activity. And I can go on and on and on. I mean, you get, you get the idea. I want to go on and on, because you need to understand the severity of what's happening here, not only morally, not only biblically, not only in the face of the Christ of God, but we are on the precipice of illegal activity. Now, I will defer to the Commonwealth Attorney, because he's gonna, he's gonna check out all of these laws that I have stated. But certainly, these are something that you need to think about. And, and I understand, I understand your allegiance to your, your board members. I get it. But shame on them. The next thing we need to do is cut off all funding, county funding, from the county Board of Li- Library Board until these recommendations, these demands are met. I intend to go to the state library and speak to the Attorney General, Mayores. So this is not stopping here. This is going further. We're gonna search this out. We're gonna, we're gonna look at all of the laws. We're gonna see what was in violation. We have the evidence. So they can't remove the books and say, well, we didn't know. We don't know. Finally, I, I do wanna, I, I do want to say this. There has been the weaponization of our public library against our children and against the future, because that's what the child is. The child represents the future. We are on the road to a culture of debauchery and lasciviousness. And none of us, none of us are gonna stand by, and you shouldn't stand by either. You are the magistrates. You're the city fathers. You're our fathers. You are the magistrates of the Appomattox County. And you know what the scriptures tell me? The Apostle Paul tells us that you are there by the providence of God for good. You are to uphold that which is just and righteous and good. But that's not where it ends. You are to put down everything that is evil and wicked without even a second thought or deliberation. Because if you don't, the scripture says you delegi- you delegitimize your office. You become, in the eyes of God, illegitimate office bearers, because you have not done what God has called you to do, putting down the evil and upholding the good. So we all know that the goal of these books, the goal of the LGBTQ community is the corruption of juveniles through sexual seduction, grooming them to be corrupt, making that which is debauched normal, all of which is not only a violation of the Holy Scriptures, not only a violation of our moral, of the fabric of our, of our culture, but also of the law of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I would even suspect a lot of laws. But a lot of these laws, nobody knows, because nobody's reading the book. So we think, oh, this is just, you know, a moral problem. So, gentlemen, I appreciate that you would show courage. I believe that you did. I think it was a little bit difficult, but I think we're all very pleased. And I hope that from this point forward, we are unapologetic determining that which is right and good in our community. Because you, especially, you should lead, you, you're the tip of the spear. Not us. You're the tip of the spear. You guys need to watch over this community and to protect the future of Appomattox. Otherwise, we will not have a future. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for your attention. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next is FY twenty twenty-four budget appropriation resolution. Oh, excuse me. I skipped one. Special event permit application, Appomattox Fourth of July celebration. Attached for the board's review is a special event permit application from Frisco Display Fireworks for the annual fireworks celebration to be held on July one, twenty twenty-three at one zero zero six three Redhurst Road in Appomattox, Virginia. This is the annual fireworks celebration, which start at dusk and lasts approximately fifteen minutes. The sheriff, public safety director, bill inspector, zoning administrator, and county administrator have reviewed the application for compliance with local resolutions, regulations, and have added comments where necessary. Well, gentlemen, I hope you've had the opportunity to review this, the application that's attached. The floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the special event permit, uh, application for the fireworks display.
Is that second? Second? All right. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Do I need to add and wave the fee? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's kind of a given.
I will amend my motion to include waving the fee. Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. FY twenty twenty-four budget appropriation resolution. After a duly advertised public hearing on Monday, May the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, to receive public comments on the proposed FY twenty-four budget, the board considered the request and requested staff make suggested changes. The Board of Supervisors held a special call meeting on Wednesday, May the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, and approved the FY twenty-four budget. Staff has prepared a resolution for our approval to appropriate the funds to the line items as specified on July one, twenty-three. And of course, we know what July one means in regards to the general assembly coming up with a budget.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about that.
Mm-hmm.
Since here we are June twentieth, state still doesn't have a budget. And I know some of the things that, that we're trying to make decisions on can't be made until the state has a budget. Should we appropriate the whole thing? I mean, I know we're gonna have to come back and revisit our budget regardless. Should we, should we appropriate the entire budget that we talked about, that we approved in May? Or should we appropriate it to December and then fill in the blanks when the state budget comes? Or is that, do we need to go that far?
Mr. Chairman, I believe, didn't we do that last year where we appropriated the first quarter? Because we did have some questions last year about the budget.
Thank you. Correct.
I thought it was two years ago. We did it about quarter during the COVID year.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we implement the FY twenty twenty-four appropriation, uh, resolution with the change that we do it for the first quarter only and then fire again later.
Motion duly made. Is that second? I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna, I was gonna ask just whether we wanted to appropriate the library money right now or we wanted to see how things shake out, just to bring it to your attention, because this does include an appropriation for the library. So I don't know if you want to do that separately or do that as part of your quarterly appropriation.
Let's do that separately. So FY twenty-four, motion duly made to accept this budget until state otherwise puts out a budget.
Mr. Chairman, if I heard the county attorney write, my amendment should be that we approve the budget without the library, or we approve the appropriation minus the library portion, and we'll make a decision on that separately.
Okay, you want to include that in the motion?
I'd like to amend my motion to
Quarterly appropriation.
My quarterly appropriation, less for all the county except for the library.
Motion made. Is that second? Further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question there.
Yes, sir.
So we just appointed a library board to fix the problems at the library. We're gonna close the library so they can't fix it?
I hope they're troubled. They're not closing the library.
Don't appropriate them any money, they're closed on July one.
No, I just heard us address it separately, because you may, you may want to appropriate them monthly instead of quarterly or something.
That's all I did was pull them out of quarterly so we could address them.
So we're gonna vote on the library budget separately?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, motion duly made. Second. Further discussion? All in favor of doing it, well, excuse me, we have a roll call vote concerning this subject. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay. Next is FY twenty-four.
Still gotta do the library.
You're gonna address Department seventy-three oh one library? Appropriate those funds?
Okay, line item seventy-three oh one?
That would be department.
The department. In regards to appropriating money to, that's the library board. Discussion on it.
It's library operations.
Library authorization.
Operations.
Operations.
I mean, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I would be willing to appro- to appropriate it by the quarter. They're forgiven three months with the new board to implement any changes that they deem necessary to be made. And if they don't implement the appropriate changes, then at the end of September, they're out of money.
That sounds good. Who was there?
No.
Okay. Further discussion?
You second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a roll call vote on this. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Anything else?
Would it be appropriate if I met with the board and explained to them the wishes of the Board of Supervisors so that they know going into the fiscal year?
I think it'd be absolutely mandatory.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else? All right. FY twenty twenty-four tax levy resolution. After duly advertised, a public hearing was held on Monday, May the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to receive public comments on the proposed FY twenty-four budget and tax levies. The board did not propose an increase in FY twenty-four tax levy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a revised resolution in your packet. It was brought to our attention that the personal property tax was not broken down by category. So we added that language, so you have the amended resolution before you.
Okay, I think I put that over there. No, that's all right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the amended resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-four tax levies.
Second.
Motion duly made and second. Discussion? Have a, uh, no, we don't need a roll call vote for this.
Yeah, it's a resolution. You should take it.
Roll call vote, Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay, next is committee appointment, Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living Committee Appointment. Uh, at the May fifteenth meeting, the board tabled the recommendation of a representative to fill the vacancy of Mr. Robert Fox on the CVACL Board of Directors. Now, this gotta be filled by October. Ms. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At the September meeting.
Okay. Does anyone have anyone that they'd like to put on this board? If not, you want to table it till next month? Okay, we'll table this.
Mr. Chairman, refresh my memory. What again does this board do and?
Ms. Adams, I'll leave that up to you.
What, they basically, um, plan activities for the senior citizens. They meet weekly at the community center. And, um, they, they do some meals on wheels and other things as resources for senior citizens in the community.
They used to be known as the Area Agency on Aging.
Yeah.
That, that I wouldn't understand when they revise this title. I don't have any way at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll table that till next month, Ms. Adams. Okay, next is consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of our bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually, in order which they were removed from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, uh, in regard, in regard to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented or approved.
Motion duly made. Is that second?
Second.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, we have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Mr. Latchney.
A quick report, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to report how much I enjoy representing Appomattox County. I, um, from the board to the citizenry, to the staff, it's, it's a pleasure representing this county. And I just wanted to say thank you for letting me do so.
And we want to thank you for your services. Mrs. Adams?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Before you, you have a copy of the county administrative report. It basically is, um, data from all the departments. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask this evening or email me. There are a couple of things that I'd like to point out. You have invitations, um, at the very end. And the first one's to the Appomattox Volunteer Friday Department Training Center Training Facility Grand Opening. And that's on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, at ten AM. Training Facility Grand Opening, and that's on Saturday, the 24th at 10:00 a.m. And I think I emailed you that invite from the fire chief, Mr. Garrett. And the second is a dispatcher, um, retiring after many years. And the dispatch department, they've decided to hold a retirement party for her and extend the invitation to the board and county staff. And that's Friday, the 30th at 4:30 p.m. at the dispatch center. In reference to that, I've got staff preparing a resolution from the board that can be presented at that retirement party.
All right.
So, um, I'll be sending that out for your review. And also, you have a copy of a letter received today from Sand Anderson, and it's the sale of real estate for delinquent taxes. And you have a copy of that before you. And last, um, without trying to put anyone on the spot, I've had several requests from departments that, um, for the board's consideration for July the 3rd to be a, a holiday. It's Monday prior to the 4th. Um, you've received a court order that the judge has issued for all the clerks offices. So the courthouse offices will be closed. And so, um, I had a request that if it's the favor of the board to consider it, um, to close on Monday, the, the 3rd, county offices. But, um, that would totally be up to you. But I did promise that I would ask this evening if that was a possibility.
Let's take care of that now, then. What's the board's feelings in regards to shutting down on July the 3rd in conjunction with the court system?
Well, it's all the judicial offices, yeah.
How much does that cost us?
Um, unfortunately, I'm not prepared to answer that. But I can determine what that would cost and send it out.
Any other discussion? If not, is our motion to approve? Or disapprove?
I'd rather know how much it's going to cost us first and whether we have the money to pay for it. I mean, I'm assuming it'd be an extra paid holiday for all county employees? Is that how we would handle it?
Yes, it wouldn't change our payroll.
I don't think so. Just like a normal workday.
Okay, so it wouldn't be an extra holiday that cost us?
It would be your normal payroll, it's just an additional day granted to employees.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How about the motion that we allow employees to have a day?
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise?
From staff members, we, they, I'm sure want to thank you for making that recommendation. Um, and also, I've been in discussions with Dr. Bennett, and I think she's going to grant the same.
The schools. Here's Adams, one thing I'd like to point out, especially to the public. Uh, Appomattox County Community Park, the lights were installed on baseball field number four by Alcon Sign and Lighting. The baseball teams are very happy to have the extra field so they can play additional games at night. Also, playground equipment has been ordered for the Appomattox Community Park that will be placed to the left of the pavilion. It should be installed in July. I think this is a great accomplishment. Anything else, Ms. Adams? That you would like to highlight?
Well, I would like to highlight shelter staff. Um, we had a surprise visit from the state vets office, and, um, there were no deficiencies observed. So we had, we're in good standing with the state on the shelter operations.
Great. That's always good news.
And we do have a full agenda for July. We have the, um, the facility study and the salary study reports forthcoming in July as well as some additional appointments.
So we need to bring breakfast?
Yeah.
Oh, my. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on Ms. Adams? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next is reports and informational items that encompass Robert E. Lee's Soil and Water Conservation District Meeting Minutes, Free Rapid Revive Training Flyer. Now, what is that?
Oh, um, it's, it's a training that the health department is holding, um, with the opioid abuse in the community. They are offering Narcan that can be administered to what people that have issue, that could be a potential overdose and could save a life.
Oh, okay. That's very important, yes. Next, we have supervisor concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a report first.
Oh, excuse me, all right.
As, as chairman of the council of chief electorate officials for the local workforce development area, which is made up of Amherst, Bedford, uh, Campbell County, and the city of Lynchburg, uh, I just want to report that we approved our budget, uh, $1.4 million for the year. Unfortunately, it's 15% less. The federal government has given us 15% less for a a power, a program that helps Appomattox citizens and youth. And it's disappointing they would cut our budget while they're giving so much other money away to places that don't really need our, uh, our money to go to. We also, uh, elected four new members to the board. Kimberly McGorle of, uh, works, who's the Workforce Services Director Manager, Sharon Dunham, David Sage, who's, uh, executive director of Virginia Technical Institute, and Carrie White, uh, nursing business strategist with Centra to our workforce board, and plus, uh, reappointing, uh, existing members on the board whose term has expired. As far as Appomattox is concerned, uh, since, uh, the July through March, roughly 261 Appomattox citizens were serviced by the Workforce Committee. And along with Reverend Jones, I do have a concern for youth. And one of the things is, is there's a youth program through the workforce that, uh, committee that, uh, targets is youth from the ages 18 to 24. It helps them find, uh, after they graduate, well, before they graduate, it helps them with career advice and guidance. After they graduate, it helps them with, uh, additional training, finding part-time, or finding jobs, uh, writing resumes, just all kinds of career advancement. And basically, that's handled through what they call career navigators. And unfortunately, because of the 15% cut in federal funds, instead of having four navigators at the, uh, Virginia Career Works, we only have two. So that's going to cut back extremely on how much assistance Appomattox youth and adults get in the workforce arena. And what I did find out, that both Campbell County and Bedford County subsidize half the salary of a navigator. So they get half of the navigator's time, and the other three counties have to take what we get left over. So I know it's not in our budget this year, but I would ask if the board may want to look at between the board, this board, and possibly the school funding, maybe we could, next year, give the workforce the Career Works fund so that we might have half a navigator or maybe even a full-time navigator here in Appomattox for our youth ages eight, 14 to 24. Because they do do a great job. Uh, there's other services, if you've never been out to the Career Works website, what they provide and the way of helping. I know that they help, there's several positions over at, uh, shoot, the ironworks over here, it, it, can't remember the name, but that are helping, uh, workers advance, get technical training so that they can progress in their career rather than just staying stable. It helps with, uh, when people get laid off from their jobs, retraining or getting them, you know, a jobs placement somewhere else. So it's, it's something that is needed, and they have helped. Like I said, they've helped 261 residents in Appomattox County so far this year. And that's my report.
Good report, thank you for that.
Well, and the navigators cost about $60,000 a year. So both Bedford and Campbell are contributing $30,000 a year to have their own navigator.
Thank you for representing Appomattox on that board. Mr. Hogan?
Nothing like, Mr. Chairman. Glad to be here.
I thought I had one thing, but I forgot. Reverend Jones?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, direct my comments out to the public. Very moved tonight, um, to see the response of our community to champion Christian values of our community and do the thing that's going to be best for our young people. So I apologize, thank you for making your voice so beautiful.
Mr. Hips?
Well, I'm not as elegant, or eloquent, I'm not elegant either, but I'm obviously not as eloquent. Um, Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate everyone here. And, um, just standing up for what you believe in. I will say, um, if you are, you know, in each one of our districts, email us and let us know that you want to serve on ours. Because in the past, the other supervisors can attest to this, finding a person to sit on the lifeblood board is about impossible. You know, there's not people knocking down my door to serve on all of the boards. Um, because frankly, they didn't know that they needed to, right? So, um, I am thankful that I do have somebody here that I can put on there. But in general, if you are anxious and interested in serving in whatever way, email us, look up who your county representative is and email us. We'd love to know. Um, this is very encouraging for us to see people come out and, um, to see the community engaged in general. Again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hips. I too like to thank the community for coming out in support of what they actually believe in. Because I think it's very important that, uh, the voice will be heard. But let me remind everyone to that. You, you don't have to come out when there's a controversial issue. Come on over there anytime we have a meeting. We'd be glad to have you. We welcome you. Anybody else have anything?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo what Mr. Hips and Reverend Jones said, that, I mean, I'm, I stand in awe of you people showing up here and, and expressing your heart and your concerns for the children of this area. And also to tap onto what, uh, Mr. Hip said. You know, we're looking for people to serve on the Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living Committee appointment. So if you want to help the, uh, agent, let us know. We've been struggling to fill that.
Anybody else?
I, I will make an unorthodox, um, statement, if you, if you don't mind. I'm proud to be a new father of five now. And, um, and I, and I, and I have to say, because of the good Lord, I, I didn't just take home a baby. Because, uh, you know, the staff at the UVA Medical Center tended to my wife. And if it was not for the Lord's intervention in those people, I would not have a wife. And, and I just, you know, I'll publicly, um, give the Lord his due for that.
Thank you. Upon saying that, you know, Mr. Henkel?
Mr. Chairman, let the board rise.
All right.